Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Dan and I decided that we would move right to public participation. And that will take us to 1:30 anyway, in case anyone else shows up for the posted time. We expect our guests' time, and then we'll go right to the -- back to the morning session. So sorry to make you wait for a moment, Abby.
I have four forms here for public participation. If you have one that I haven't collected, if you could get that to me, that would be great. As a reminder, you will have five minutes to speak. If you can come to the end of the table. If you have written materials, if you just pass them to someone at the end of the table, we can get them distributed. And just to remind you that the Board does not engage in conversation with the person doing public comment at the board table. So, thank you. And whenever you're ready, Mr. Love, the first speaker is John Love.
Thank you. We have problems with education in Michigan. I think there's no question of that. But there's some shallow thinking that really has troubled me. The first thing is, we want to blame teachers for our problems. And so we're going to work on their tenure and take away from the teaching environment. The teachers aren't the problem. The other problem we like to talk about is money. We don't have enough money. That's not the problem either. We're just funding a system that hasn't been reformed. It's leftover from the horse and buggy era. They've downsized some of the districts, but not enough. We have a problem with knowledge. The students are not performing at the top of their capabilities as compared to other school systems in the United States. And who's responsible for all this? There's only one group. That's the management. And where does the buck stop? The Constitution says it stops here. Because you have a constitutional duty of general supervision. But instead, you want to say, "Well, these local schools are going to have to figure it all out." All, you know, 700 different school districts are going to have to figure out how to educate people. Well, I read the Supreme Court case that has Madam Strauss's name on it. And it says specifically, "Five specifically delineated and therefore constitutionally inviable functions are -- still remain active and valid." And this decision says ultimate control of -- they're talking about education -- remains with the Board. So, it just makes sense. If you have a $23 billion educational system that's being funded by the people, that it be managed in some Board of Director-type function and overseen. You can't have 57 intermediate school districts and 700 local districts. They need to be managed as a team. And this idea that if you have a war, you're going to have the soldiers go out and figure out what to do, it doesn't work that way, and it can't work that way. It's inefficient and it's leftover. And one example is the one you talked about here today. There's accreditation system. It's kind of complex, but you have the data. Just go out and do it right now. And figure out who's the good guys and who the bad guys are. And just go ahead and do it. This thing, if you need a note from the legislature, the legislature is incapable of figuring anything out. They're run by lobbyists. The beer tax has been frozen in Michigan for 50 years. So, that's how this legislature runs. So, the only hope that education has in Michigan is for you to do these little reforms here. Basic education is the foundation of education in Michigan. And the governor wants to talk about getting up college-ready. That's a dream. It's unrealistic. We need to be educating all the kids. And some of them are not -- are going to go to vocational schools. Not everybody's going to be a rocket scientist. And we need to have the basic system work. It does not work. It needs to be reorganized. There needs to be a test for every grade, so that the kids that are behind are fixed, supported and helped immediately, not after three years of thinking about it. There needs to be a summer school program. If you don't pass and make the grade, you go to summer school. I went to summer school. Look what happened to me.[284.12][284.12](Laughter). The other aspect is dropouts. We need a program to take care of dropouts, because they want to talk about graduation rates. If you drop out, and people tell me, "Well, look, the dropouts, we're happy that they drop out, because then our graduation rate goes up." So, the dropouts need to be dealt with, not with a challenge, but with a mandate, that the dropouts are nurtured, figured out what to do, and dealt with. And if they're on welfare, their caseworkers need to be involved, and they need to be accountable. And I understand Clinton did this down in Arkansas. We could be doing something right here. And that way, you build up the basic education system. And the other thing, I went down to the Detroit headquarters for the public school system in the Fisher Building, and what they're wasting on rent on that building is a disgrace, and the Welcome Center and all that stuff. And Roy Roberts isn't going to be a miracle worker. You've got to get involved in that thing. The other thing is, we need to have a July meeting. Fix this thing for fall and review what the plan is going to be, so that when we -- fall comes, we're ready to move. And China is taking all our jobs, and they're driving all our cars. And until we deal with that, we're not going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My pacemaker.[368.72][368.72](Laughter). Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Dan Quisenberry.
I'm looking forward to that summer school.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Flaggen, Flanagan, and President Austin, and members of the State Board. I appreciate the opportunity to come and comment today. We do have, and historically have had, great respect for our relationship as -- I'm Dan Quisenberry with the Michigan Association of Public School Academies, all the charter schools in Michigan. And historically, we've appreciated the relationship we have with this department. You work hard. The staff works hard at being transparent with the data, taking information, trying to make sure we do equal things to school districts around the state. And part of that is the charge that you have under the Charter Schools statute, to provide a report to the state legislature. So my comments today, and I'll leave you with a little bit of paperwork, are to address your 2010 Public School Academy report to the legislature. Very similar to the discussion you had before lunchtime, the challenge here that I'm trying to address is, how do you take numbers and make them into relevant information? And we've had some struggle with that, as you recall, at this board table. Some of you were here, some of you were not. But for the last few years, how do you appropriately take some of those numbers, draw comparisons, provide something that's a relevant report to the legislature, or for the rest of us, on how these schools perform? So, my goal here today was to raise some questions, and I'm going to leave some documents with you. And I realized, as I sat here contemplating this, I put key messages and talking points. What I really meant probably to say was, "Points to talk about," in messages. So that's really the idea. It was just a habit to say talking points.
Are you sure you didn't want to just a recipe for this?
Absolutely. Happy to have you repeat any of these good things. Here's some things, please, I would ask for your consideration, as you look at this state report that you do, you're required to do on an annual basis. According to the recent 2010 MEEP results, 72 percent of the 111,000 students that are in 250 charter schools are considered to be proficient on all tests. That's 72 percent of the total kids, compared to 79 percent of all the public school kids. So, close. 535 school districts compared to 250 charter schools. Students in Michigan charter schools, however, are significantly more at risk. If you define at-risk as free and reduced-price lunch numbers, 71 percent of our students are at risk, 45 percent of the students in the statewide averages. If you were to look at minority numbers, our numbers are 67 percent minority students. The state average is 27 percent. My point there is, only to say, as researchers, and I'm not one, but if you talk to experts, how do you do apples-to-apples comparisons of schools? They're going to coach you to look at likeness. And how do you best do that? And what's a gold standard, or a very effective way to make those kinds of comparisons, to know exactly how our charter schools are performing in the state of Michigan? So it's certainly unreasonable to look at state averages. What does that tell you? We're not sure. It's also not helpful to look at geography. A classic example is, we have a charter school right in downtown Warren, but 65-plus percent of the kids come from Detroit Public. So are they Warren kids? Are they Detroit kids? Is this an appropriate comparison? And of course, people like you were listening to this morning that do this kind of stuff, as professionals, will really tell you, some of the standards, we might not have the numbers for in the state of Michigan, to do the best kinds of comparisons, where you're actually tracking kids that might have likely gone to a charter school. But one of the things that you did do, two years ago and beyond, was use a number, a composite number of host districts, where charter schools are mostly located in the state, and as an aggregate comparison to the statewide average of those charter schools. We continue to look at that number, because we think it's interesting. So if you look at the 2010 MEEP scores on those 22 traditional school districts where charters are mostly located, charter school MEEP scores on 18 of the tests exceed those host districts 16 times. 18 tests, if you look at all the grades in all the tests, charter school scores are higher on 16 of those tests. And they include districts like Detroit, Grand Rapids, Lansing, but usually Ann Arbor and some other districts where charters are located, in a greater number. And it's also some interesting data. I don't know how you do this, but looking at subgroup information, again, if the goal of this report is to find relevant information about this, then we, and I heard many of you talking about closing the achievement gap, we see numbers every year, very successful numbers from African-American students in charter schools. They will beat state averages. Why is that what's happening? If, again, if the goal of that report is to look at only not only the performance of these schools, but what's interesting here, it'd almost push you to say, "Let's dig deeper in some of these things." And then finally, a suggestion. If you use SEPI's longitudinal data, which Central Michigan's Center for Charter Schools Office does, they've recently developed a statistical comparison, which represents individual charter schools' students' populations, proportionately weighted, a proportionally weighted average of those traditional public school districts, and their students who attend if they weren't enrolled in a charter school. So, what it's trying to do is, it's a composite resident district, so it's really looking at likely kids that might have gone to a charter school but don't, and then comparing those students' performance to the students' performance in charter school. Gets close to likeness, with data that we have available in Michigan. When you do that, compared to the 2010 MEEP information, which Central Michigan did on the charter schools, again, looking at those 18 MEEP tests, you find, again, success. That in total, the statewide portfolio of charter public schools, 72 percent are proficient, compared to that 66 percent proficient for the kids that would have been in that aggregate composite resident district. My point is two things, basically. As I see the report that you're looking at on your agenda this afternoon, it's missing some valuable comparisons and information that I think might inform people. I know we've talked about, when you've had comparisons, there's been objections to it, and you've tried to find the right ones. So, we still need to address that question in our mind. I also start to ask, what is it that we're trying to learn from this? We see success in it. I'm not trying to just be an advocate for charter schools. I'm trying to say, if these schools are helping us lead to improved education across the state, aren't those things that we want to dig deeper on and learn about? So with that, I'll leave you, and appreciate you always taking these things into consideration, having dialogue about them. And I'll leave my talking points, or your talking points.
Thank you.
Things to talk about. Thanks, Dan.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Koszabod.
I'm going to try and beat the clock. My name is Kathleen Koszabod. I'm a temporarily retired special educator, and retired from the CAC recently as well, working on my PhD at MSU in the area of family-school collaboration in special education. I live in Ann Arbor, and hold my bachelor's degree from U of M. As a volunteer advocate for the Learning Disabilities Association of Michigan, I met Wendy Heckman, your next speaker, a parent who called for information and assistance on getting a personal curriculum for her daughter, a senior with an IEP. She will be speaking right after me. This board's support of a personal curriculum for students with IEPs is why I'm here. The word has still not spread, and the result is, a return to the wait-to-fail model of support for students with disabilities. If general education is for all students, we need to educate districts that the Michigan Merit Curriculum can be achieved in many ways. And I just want to thank you, and here's information on the Learning Disabilities Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I beat the clock.[914.12][914.12](Laughter).
We're glad that's temporary, by the way. Temporary retirement, you said, right?
Yes, temporary.
All right.
Okay. And our next speaker is Wendy Heckman.
Be patient with me. I'm only used to speaking in front of my board members for the band boosters, so this is really new for me, but I'll go ahead, and I'm going to try to do this as quickly as I can and get it into five minutes, okay? My name is Wendy Heckman, and I would like to share with you my daughter Riley and my journey through the Michigan Merit Curriculum. We first found out about the Michigan Merit Curriculum when my daughter was an eighth-grader at her annual IEP. And her special ed teachers informed me that she was going to have to get through this curriculum. And all I could think was, "Oh, my God. How are we going to do this?" Riley has a learning disability in math, and received an IEP during her fifth-grade school year. As of her last evaluation in 2009 with the KTEA, she scored a 5.2 grade equivalent in math concepts and applications, and a 4.9 grade equivalent in math computation. She struggles with short-term memory loss and with math problems with multiple steps. Riley is 18 years old. Two weeks ago, she was a senior, struggling through her two toughest classes that semester, Algebra II and Chemistry A, which she was completing on Plato, and which she was failing in both classes. For three years, I had asked for a personal curriculum in math for Riley, and each time was turned down with excuses like, "No, the personal curriculums were only for students who are accelerating in the curriculum, or the state of Michigan frowns on personal curriculums, and they are very hard to get, or very rare." I would like to say, in November 2010, Riley was the first student in her school district to receive a personal curriculum, which was for the Algebra II. In January 2011, she received a personal curriculum for chemistry. Even though she finally had a personal curriculum, the final months in high school were often an emotional roller coaster ride for her and her family. Will she do it? What if she doesn't? During these last months while Riley struggled, I looked for any way that we could somehow fight to get Riley her diploma. A certificate of completion was no longer an option. She had done more than shown up for four years of high school. She had participated in marching band with her beloved cymbals, Burton Jeff. She was the first girl cymbal player in the band, in the marching band history. She participated in concert band, drumline, follies, theater arts, and even won an award through Berry County for a poem she had written in ninth grade. She made friends, went to proms, participated in float making, and powder puff football during her homecoming senior year. She went back and passed the math classes that she struggled through and failed until she passed them. So what was Riley entitled to, if she did not pass this Chemistry and Algebra II? According to FAPE, every child is entitled to a free and appropriate public education, even ones with handicaps. But what was appropriate for Riley? Was this Michigan Merit Curriculum appropriate for Riley? And if she was not entitled to a diploma, what was she entitled to? She would have the amount of credits required to graduate, according to the school, would be missing a half-credit in science, according to the Michigan Merit Curriculum. I couldn't help but feel that something was not right here. According to Michigan's Mandatory Special Education Act of 1976, and Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Amendment of 1997, it guaranteed all persons with disabilities the right to a free and appropriate education. But the Michigan Merit Curriculum states that each child must have four credits in English, four credits in math, three credits in science, three credits in social studies, one credit in visual performing and applied arts, and one credit in physical education and health. How could FAPE work with the Michigan Merit Curriculum to entitle a child with learning disabilities to a diploma? It can't without a personal curriculum. What is appropriate for one child isn't always appropriate for another. Every child learns differently, and by lumping them into one mold, expecting them to succeed in the Michigan Merit Curriculum, especially learning disabled students, in my feeling, is a violation of their rights to a free and appropriate public education. They have been set up to fail. Teachers, school administrators, parents, and students need to be made more aware of personal curriculums, and the modifications and options that are out there for them. Many parents in our school district are unaware of personal curriculums, or have asked and been denied, like me. Riley and I had to pave a trail for a personal curriculum. The school and the head of special education had absolutely no clue how to set up your personal curriculum, so we walked it together. It was a group effort. What is the saying? It takes a village to raise a child? Well, maybe it takes a community for a child to succeed in the MMC. From parents to teachers, from school administrators to special education teachers, to whom I -- oh, a huge thank you. These teachers are incredibly underrated and underappreciated. To Ms. Denny Boucher, Ms. Janine Smith, and Ms. Tammy Grabowski, I can never thank you enough. To Ms. Kathleen Koszabod, who became more than just an advisor, but a special friend. In the end, I am proud to say, she did it. Riley did it. She received her high school diploma on June 5th with her fellow classmates. I think I was more proud of this diploma than my own high school diploma. My daughter and I took a journey together. There were detours and delays, but this is one journey that will be one of my fondest. When I reflect on that moment when we met up for the first time after finding out she could graduate, two days before graduation, Riley was standing in the gym with her senior class. She turned and looked at me. She said one word, and as she said it, she smiled, this big grin. "Mom." We hugged and held each other, crying while I took her face in my hands and told her, "You did it. You did it. I'm so proud of you." That memory will be one of my most special memories, one that will live with me forever. This is for you, Riley. I love you. And this is Riley with her diploma. And this is her diploma. And this is Riley's senior pitcher. She is proof that it can happen. She is proof that it can happen. It was a lot of hard work, but she did it. And I am so incredibly proud of her. Thank you.[1319.42][1319.42](Applause).
Well, talk about timely in a warm-up act. We are ready to get into the presentation on personal curriculum. So maybe if Abby and Linda will join us, it's also --
If there's any other public to speak, we should make sure we --
Did we have all the sheets for public participation? Why don't I just, with that preamble, it's pretty much took my notes and said it all in a much better way. So, thank you, ma'am. And I'll turn this over to Sally.
Yes. Some of the board members had expressed that you have begun some questions about personal curriculum, and we have done an extensive amount of work, Abby and Linda, the credit for doing that. And just thought that we would go ahead and share that with you, and then hopefully also raise the awareness of both educators and families about the options for the personal curriculum, so that it doesn't become a struggle as we just learned about. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Linda.
Thank you. Just to set the stage a little bit, you'll recall that when the Michigan Merit Curriculum legislation was passed, one piece of that was also the personal curriculum. And as our former speaker, or just our most recent speaker, mentioned, it was designed for those students who wanted to move ahead and not be held to having to stay in high school for four years following through in this curriculum. They were able to go ahead, and so it was designed for schools to have that mechanism. It is still used for that, but in addition to that, it is used for students who are struggling and have some difficulties. It is a local decision about how this is used. It's a tool for local schools to utilize, and we have provided the guidance. Abby will go over that with you, and some information to schools, as well as some tools. And so Abby's going to review that for you, so understand what we've put out for schools to utilize.
Sure. Thank you. So, I start with a quote from John Dewey, before I launch into the discussion of the personal curriculum.
Can you tell us who you are, please?
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Abby is Abby Graff, and she's the supervisor of the Curriculum and Instruction Unit within the Office of Education Improvement and Innovation. So, my apologies. Abby's been working with us in that position for about six months, nine months. Coming up on a year, in fact.
Eleven months, yeah.[1472.65][1472.65](Laughter).
But who's counting that I'm counting? Not that she's counting or anything.
Because I think that this quote really underscores the intent behind the Michigan Merit Curriculum principle. That what the best and wisest parent wants for his own child, that must the community want for all its children. Any other ideal for our schools is narrow and unlovely. Acted upon, it destroys our democracy. So, again, our previous speaker outlined for you, and I'm sure you know very well, which are the requirements for the Michigan Merit Curriculum. And it's certainly an exciting time, in that in the recent weeks, recent days, we've had our very first graduating class under the Michigan Merit Curriculum, walking across the stage, all across the state. And so, you know, what the underlying belief, of course, of this Merit Curriculum is, is that all students can achieve at high levels when provided a rigorous curriculum and appropriate supports, foremost of which is effective instruction. A common critique that we hear of the Michigan Merit Curriculum course is, this is a one-size-fits-all approach to education, and how can that be tenable for all of our students, when all of our students present very different needs, interests, strengths, challenge areas? And what we need to look at is that, of course, this is not a one-size-fits-all approach, because increased rigor for all does not mean one-size-fits-all. And in fact, the majority of the talking that I'm going to be doing today, and when I reference the law, I'm primarily speaking about Section 380, 1278b, subsection 5, because that's where all this personal curriculum stuff is. But another subsection of that piece of the law, subsection 7, is one that is often overlooked, and it's actually in the law that we encourage schools and teachers and districts to look at alternative instructional delivery methods for this content. So while the state does mandate the curriculum, or the content that defines the Michigan Merit Curriculum, at no point do we say, "It has to happen in this type of classroom. It doesn't have to happen, you know, with this curriculum material." You don't even have to, you know, put it in this prepackaged way. There are all different types of ways that this content can be delivered and assessed that can meet the needs of the diverse learners that come to our classrooms. So, to get into the specifics of subsection 5, which is the personal curriculum piece here, I want to talk just a little bit about the process first. And Linda mentioned already that this is a local process. To get the process started, there has to be a request made. And that request for a personal curriculum modification can be made by one of several persons. It can be made by a parent or legal guardian of the student. It can be made by the student themselves, if they're over the age of 18 or legally emancipated. Or it can be made by school personnel. And this request is typically made to a school counselor or administrator. Once that request is received, then a personal curriculum committee needs to be convened. And again, this is an individualized process. The purpose of personal curriculum is to individualize the rigor and relevance of the Michigan Merit Curriculum. So the idea is not that you have kind of a standing committee through which every request comes. Because the required membership of this committee includes the student, the student's parent or legal guardian, school counselor, a teacher who is currently teaching that student, or who is an expert in the content area to be modified. And if that student has an IEP, it is recommended that a school psychologist or a teacher of record also be present in this committee. Now, the responsibility of the committee is to kind of make two determinations. The first is, is this requested modification allowable? And I'll go into detail about what the four types of allowable modifications are under the law. But the second, and kind of the more individualized and the trickier decision that has to be made then, is, if this is, in fact, allowable under the law, is it appropriate for the student? And the centerpiece of that determination is the student's educational development plan, which lays out for the student what their post-secondary goals are, and what the plan is during high school to get them to that point. So if we decide, yes, under the law, for example, a student can modify Algebra II, then the committee has to look and see, well, is that, does that align with what the student wants to do after high school? And is that going to put up any barriers to the student accomplishing those post-secondary goals? Because if we run into a problem there, then we can probably say that this is not going to be an appropriate modification for the student, just as one example. Now, when all of this dialogue and these decisions are happening, the committee may either decide, yes, we want to go ahead with this modification, or no, we don't. If they decide yes, then the final piece that needs to take place is that both the parent or guardian of the student, and the superintendent or designee of that local district has to agree to the modification. So it is, in effect, an agreement between the district and the student, which means that it's not transferable necessarily from district to district if a student relocates. That district could decide to go ahead and accept that personal curriculum, but that's certainly not the assumption. Often, we're asked about an appeals process. For example, if the committee decides, yes, we want to go ahead, and the district says, no, we don't want to modify, then what happens? Again, it's a very local decision. There may, what we suggest is that there is an appeals process set up. We certainly can't mandate that one be done. But it We certainly can't mandate that one be done, but there's no mechanism by which a decision such as that can be appealed beyond the local district. So there are four types of modifications that are outlined in the law, and this is going back to what's allowable under the law. The first type of modification is the one that, since 2006, has undergone the most changes in law. And so where we are right now, in fact, as of July of 2011, a student can request and receive any time after the ninth grade, personal curriculum modification of Algebra II. And that one-credit requirement of Algebra II can be modified to either a half-credit of Algebra II, or a half-credit of Statistics, or a half-credit of Functions and Data Analysis. And again, any student after the ninth grade can request this type of modification via a personal curriculum. The second type of modification that's defined is that one that was alluded to in terms of the enrichment option, students who kind of want to go, quote-unquote, "above and beyond." And what can happen with this type of modification is that a request can be made to modify the one-credit of PE and Health, and/or one-credit of Social Studies, and/or one-credit of Visual Performing and Applied Arts, to earn additional credits over and above the requirements in English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, or World Languages. Now, here's where things start to get a little bit more vague and the area a little bit grayer, is that there's a special clause for transfer students, which, under this law, are defined as students who are transferring into a Michigan public school from an out-of-state or a non-public school, having already earned at least the equivalent of two years of high school credit. So if they're transferring in as a ninth grader, these types of modifications would not apply. This is only, again, for students who are transferring in with two years of credit. Now, for this student, the law allows modifications not otherwise allowed, which are the two previous types of modifications I talked about, which opens up all of the other content areas essentially for a transfer student such as this, with two caveats, which is up here in the fine print. A transfer student must still earn the half-credit of Civics and must complete mathematics in their final year of high school, as required of the Michigan Merit Curriculum. And that mathematics course must be at least Algebra I. If they've already taken Algebra I and/or Geometry and/or Algebra II, it needs to be a course that would typically come after that, their last course taken in the typical Now, the type of modification in which probably we get the most questions, in which there remains the most confusion, are modifications for students with an IEP. And that's because I've described for you pretty much everything that the law says up to this point. And here's where the law kind of leaves some things out, and leaves a lot of leeway at the local level for decisions to be made about what's appropriate. And that's because what the law says about modifications for students with an IEP is that modifications may be made to the Michigan Merit Curriculum that are not otherwise allowed. And you notice that there are no caveats up there, that essentially anything is open to modification. But kind of where some of the misunderstanding comes into play, I want to make several points. First of all, there's sometimes the erroneous assumption that simply because a student has an IEP, they get a personal curriculum, and that is absolutely not true. The assumption, going back to when I opened the presentation, the assumption is that the Michigan Merit Curriculum is the curriculum for all students. Some may need some modifications. Some students with IEPs may need modifications. And so when we want to look at those personal curriculum modifications for a student with an IEP, first of all, the first two types that I described, the Algebra II and the enrichment options, are certainly available to students with IEPs. And if that's what's appropriate for that student, then certainly we don't need to go any further. If there are other content areas, then we need to be able to make a correlation between the student's ability to access and demonstrate proficiency in the content that we want to modify and the modification that we're looking to make. The question I think that we get most often about students with IEPs and the personal curriculum is, does this mean that we can give a student a personal curriculum and therefore a diploma, but take out this credit altogether? They don't have to take Algebra II at all, or they don't need a fourth year of English Language Arts. Can we do that much? And the guidance that we give, that the law gives, is that the personal curriculum must include all content that is practicable for the student, which means all content that the student can access and demonstrate proficiency in, both with and without appropriate supports. And that the personal curriculum modification cannot undermine the integrity of that diploma, because remember, there is one diploma in the state of Michigan, and that confers the same assumptions to all stakeholders about the person holding that diploma. So going on then to what happens? What happens after a personal curriculum? The personal curriculum is designed as such that, going back to what I said before, it's meant to individualize the rigor and relevance of the Michigan Merit Curriculum and uphold the integrity of the diploma. And therefore, if a student completes the personal curriculum successfully, they earn the diploma. So a diploma is earned, of course, for a student who completes the Merit Curriculum with or without a personal curriculum. Now, there are many questions, of course, about what happens if a student does not complete these requirements. What is a certificate of completion exactly? And you'll notice that I don't even use that term up here on this slide, because completion without a diploma, which is often referred to as a certificate of completion at the local level, is not defined or recognized in state law. And that's a locally determined designation or certificate that's developed at the local level. Some of them have certificates of completion, some of them have attendance awards, some of them have none of the above, and the only option is the diploma. And thus, you know, a conversation has to be had at some point, certainly, for students for which the Merit Curriculum is not a practicable course of study, as to what happens then after high school if there's no diploma. And that conversation, of course, comes back to the educational development plan, just like it does for any student looking at any type of modification, or for any student entering and completing high school in the state of Michigan at all, is that we're not looking at high school in isolation. High school is a pathway to something that comes after. And so if we're talking about a student who we know is not on track to earn a diploma, what's coming after, and how do we best prepare that student to be successful in their post-secondary So just to let you know about a few things that we've done here in the department to try to get the word out and provide guidance and support to districts, to ISDs, to parent groups, is that we've got a number of different guidance and outreach efforts going on. We have a personal curriculum liaisons network comprised of, started out with a request of all districts to give us one person, and it's kind of expanded as more people have heard about it. And it's kind of an all-comer situation now. If you want to be a liaison, great, we can get the word out to more people. But we have a website there, Ning website. If you are not familiar with Ning, it's essentially kind of a professional, social networking-type site wherein we connect liaisons across the state so they can share practices with the personal curriculum, where we archive our monthly webinar series related to the personal curriculum, where we post updated information about the personal curriculum, law changes, answers to questions, forums, and so forth. We also have had, for the last three years, a personal curriculum decision tree, which is an online tool wherein a user can go in and ask them a series of questions, and based on the answers to those questions, gives you action steps about, you know, is the student eligible for a personal curriculum? How do we write the personal curriculum? How do we track the personal curriculum? And so forth. So it actually creates an action plan for implementation at an individualized level. And then many, many on-demand pieces of support as well. Numerous presentations to various stakeholder groups over the last few years, responses to phone calls and emails, and continuously updating the guidance documents that we maintain on our website, the Ning site, and any other stakeholder organization that requests to post those, we share freely.
Good. Mike?
Okay. Board members. Mary Ann, you requested it, so I'm going to you first.
Well, I want to thank you very much for your presentation. You were just installing there, and you have cleared up a lot of questions I had, as well as, I'm sure, a lot of people in the public sector. So, and I think it's good for people to realize that, however the diploma is worded, that it is a local decision. It doesn't necessarily come from us. So that was a big problem that a lot of people have because of a certificate of completion following someone through life and not really saying that they had completed high school. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary Cassandra. And Dan?
Well, I too want to thank you for this presentation. I think a number of us wanted to have this presentation because we tend to get parents who come to us with various concerns. And I just want to reiterate one thing you said. You talked about the second step is the personal curriculum committee meeting. Is that a must, or is that up to the district?
Our guidance is that the option must be offered. Each of the four options must be offered at the local level, but that does not mean that the personal curriculum needs to be granted. So it's certainly a good-faith assumption that those committee meetings will be held.
And I can tell you from personal experience, that's where we're falling through the cracks. I've had, I have personally told parents to go to the school and request a personal curriculum committee meeting, and they are told flat-out, no. It's not even discussed as an option. And so I think that may be where we need to be more diligent, and I say "we" as in all of us, not necessarily you. We need to be more diligent in communicating with schools that they can't just say no, that they have to actually explore this with parents and students. So that is something, if you have recommendations for us on how we can be better communicating that, I certainly would be interested in that, because I think schools need to start following through on that. And then my final question is regarding the unnamed certificate of completion, if you will, and understanding it's a local decision. But what happens if a school awards a so-called certificate of completion? Is that student considered a dropout? Is that student considered a non-graduate? How does that affect that school's numbers?
Graduation rate? It would affect their graduation rate. They would not be able to claim that student as a graduate.
Okay. So under our new accreditation system, when we get it, that will certainly be a consideration, hopefully.
As well as AYP and several other factors.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Before, to your point, Cassandra, maybe we could tomorrow write the Ed Alliance, I see some of my colleagues here, and ask them where they have opportunities in their newsletters to maybe get the point out about the personal curriculum committee being assured, if requested. They've been very helpful sometimes in getting this out in a quick way. Marty, I think we could do that. Kathleen?
You know, I was going to raise the same question that Cassandra did, but I'd like to thank, too, Mrs. Heckman for really raising our consciousness about this recently. We had talked about it a long time ago, but we didn't have much experience with it, and now we've learned that some districts have been quite unresponsive to students and seem to know what to do, which seems a shame, because they could get the guidance if they asked. But this gets back to Mr. Love's point, too, that theoretically, the court says one thing, but the legislature disposes and makes laws that says they're going to do this and they're going to do that, and says the local district's going to decide these things. And we cannot override that, much as we would like to. So that's a problem. And we've made some of the same points, but to no avail. So I appreciate this explanation, because it's been a long time since this has been explained, and it's never been explained quite so clearly and nelytably. So thank you very much. It's a pleasure to meet you.
Dan's place.
Is it possible? I think this is such a nice succinct explanation. Is this possible for us to get sent this to us on an email? We could use this in our, when we meet with other people. And I think it'd be nice to be able to send on to constituents and say, here's our, you know, what the Michigan Department of Education is doing and what they expect to have done at the local level. Would that be possible?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks so much, guys. This is really helpful.
Thank you.
Very much. Board thinking about it as a way to communicate. Okay, we're to item G. Let's see, I think we amended. No.
Bye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I just follow this up? It occurs to me that we might want to, you know, with the experience we've had, we might want to make recommendations to the legislature to somehow improve this personal curriculum process. And maybe our staff can offer some recommendations to make it work better, what we could propose into a change of the law.
I guess to suggest that, Dan's the legislative committee?
Got it down right now.
Okay. Good idea. Is there any discussion regarding the criteria for grant programs? Okay, thank you then. Let's recess for lunch. Oh, that was quick. Back, called order. Good morning. No, good afternoon. The time is now.
I had some questions on the guide, on the...
201. And a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of 14, 2011 is called to order. First items are approval of State Board of Ed minutes. The first item is the approval of the regular and committee of the whole meeting minutes of May 10.
Removed.
By Cassandra. supported by Dan. Directions. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same. Next item is the approval of Record of State Board of Ed New Member Orientation on May 24th.
Removed.
Supported by John. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It happened, whether we approve it or not. Thank you.
It wasn't that bad, was it?
No, it was great, really. I don't know what you thought. Honestly, I hope we actually should understand your feedback on that. Our guys worked at it, and we thought it was a good way to feel. Is he nodding? Good. Do that each, well, every other year when we have new members and everyone's invited. Approval of Record of State Board of Ed Retreat on May 24th.
Removed.
By John. Supported by Dan. Worth a discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same. John, you want us to defer our, well, you're welcome to do yours. You're the, I'm thinking about Nancy's vote.
Yeah, I do, I do, I want us to get to some big items, because I know Nancy's got to leave in an hour that we can discuss. Let me just be very briefly to say, the forums we've done have been terrific around the state, and we've got another one on Monday in Detroit, State Board of Education Members, a public forum. It's at Wayne County Community College from 4:00 to 7:00 at their downtown Detroit campus, and I may talk more later or in the future. I think, as those of you who participated, the salutary effects of these events on both us, the state board members, elected officials engaging with our education family and vice-versa, the folks that have come and participated, have been tremendous. There's been a terrific civil, positive discourse, sharing ideas, issues, recommendations, innovations. We've learned how to run them in a way that really balances letting the public have voice with the officials, superintendents, representative of education groups, in a way everybody speaks, everybody gets applause. There's a lot of good understanding advanced. We've had several bipartisan state legislators, both sides of the aisle participate, listen, become part of the discussion very healthily. So it's been a terrific thing, and I know others of you can share more later, but just wanted to note, the next one, the last in this, what I hope will be something we will figure out how to do episodically, but the last one is Monday in Detroit, 4:00 to 7:00, Wayne County Community College, Detroit campus.
Thanks, John. I'll shorten mine then to just a few things. One is Flora, Sally, and I met with the education deans. I think we had a good meeting. We'll have more to report at another time on trying to move the ball per priorities that'll be formally approved later today. This month, my school visit was Gaylord, Gaylord, and I got to visit a beating-the-odd school in North Ohio. I was tremendously impressed. It makes you realize what we can do with kids, even when they have high free lunch counts. And we don't typically, for some reason, think about some of those schools. As often in rural areas, it tends to be stereotypical. We're pretty careful, I think, at this table, to talk about rural and urban, poor, and the challenges, but I'd recommend to you, any of the beating-the-odd schools would really be worth visiting. I think...
it, you know, you never know when you walk in these, and I love the opportunity, by the way, so thank you, guys. But you never know who's going to show up, you know? So it's always good to see friendly faces and appreciate that support. And I think it was excellent, so I appreciate the opportunity that you guys gave us. Cassandra, congratulations, Vice President. Vice President, I know that's a recent change for you at.
Oh, thank you.
McComb Community College. Sister Ralph, I know we all know, received the 2011 After School State Champion Award. Just wanted to make sure we're all continued aware of that.
We will have a presentation someday.
We are. Go ahead. I appreciate, these are just a couple of shout-outs. MASCD has really done a great job on highlighting the stories of beating the odds schools. We think that's the way to continue to help people understand how it can be done in schools that are similar to their own, so a special shout-out to them. And John Van Wagoner, Lisa Gallagher, Jan Ellis, their work on the dropout prevention and the dropout challenge has been tremendous. And I don't know if you saw in the news to know in the clippings this week, that one school, Brandywine, that had 100% graduation rate, and this was a school that struggled with that. And they did it even in the year that we all thought, or I shouldn't say we all thought, that there were some who thought that there'd be trouble with dropouts during that first year of the, of a curriculum being in place. And just call that to your attention. I'm going to leave it at that for today. Do public participation. First item on the discussion action is the proposed school accreditation standards. We have a suggested motion. We had, for those that are maybe just afternoon participants, we had a, I'd say, a thorough presentation and discussion. I think it was a couple hours, actually, which is worthy of this topic, and.
You can never be too thorough with the accreditation system, can you?
Right, right. So is there a motion?
I move approval of the proposed school accreditation standards.
By John.
Support.
Supported by Nancy. Discussion. Yes, Kat.
In fact, this was new, present, new item today, because it's so different from the one we had before. And I know we had it this morning, we're going to vote on it this afternoon. Is it absolutely essential that we do it today? Or can we wait a month and get testimony or comments from people? Or have we, has that been factored in? Have we gotten comments from?
It won't be a month, though. It'll be two months, because we don't meet each other.
Lisa, please.
Just a reminder, as part of my report last week, you did see the public comments on this. It was part of my report and the attachments that were sent out with the discovery of the public.
Oh, well, I have to tell you, I haven't gotten, my email hasn't worked. My internet connection has been down for two weeks. And Marilyn was good enough to fax a lot of it to me, but I didn't see your report. I didn't know that.
This was from last week.
From last week?
Last month. This new plan? Yes. And this plan was a summary of the public comments. This is my report.
Okay, well, I didn't, somehow or other, I didn't see that.
The reason we did that, and I know, I mean, I'm sometimes losing track of this myself, but the reason we did that at the agenda planning was to, in effect, have the extra month. But these revisions were all based on that public testimony. That's why we got that.
I realize that. The revisions were based on the public testimony. Have they seen this new version, and have people reacted to it?
Kathy, I think that's a judgment call, you know, and I think it's a judgment call for us. And I think, given the discussion we had, and some of us, as you know, were proactively making sure we were flagging this coming rework for our stakeholders and appreciating their feedback on it. And I think we tried to name a lot of that feedback and issues this morning. And I guess I feel comfortable that we're attending to the issues that stakeholders in this have been raising, are raising, and are not doing it in an overly expeditious way.
I appreciate, I appreciate that they responded to the public comment, which is very good. But considering that we were, you know, there was a lawsuit brought to the FCon, because we didn't do enough public hearings and all that stuff, I just want to make sure we have had a chance for them to comment on this before we actually vote on it.
To be clear, the attorney generals are comfortable with the process. We've been running everything by them, and the public has had a chance to comment. It's just like legislation, you know? You have public comment, and it gets sent, according to the statute, then it goes to the, eventually to the superintendent, who then sends it to the legislature. There's not an additional public comment period after, otherwise you could perpetually, you could have the public on purpose, offering a new change every time, just to recycle the public comment period. So the, but it has been, we run it all by the attorney generals.
We were very thorough this time. Thanks for, it is good to clarify that, though, so thank you, Kat. Any further discussion? Dan, please.
I'm going to support this, but I do want to note for the record that I would really like to see testing done, and maybe not even, once again, just maybe not even by districts, that we know what districts would perform, but kind of the impact on high schools versus middle schools versus elementary schools. Or, you know, if we could break the data out in various ways without identifying individual districts, I think it'd be helpful, just to making sure that it actually does land in a fair way.
Does that sound? Minamona, good?
Yeah, I mean, I want to talk with Joseph before we give a.
Yeah, I mean, well, one way, it's either good, or we would be back and try to talk through what some of the issues might be. How about if we leave it that way? But point well taken, and get it. Sally's doing her job, trying to make sure we actually can pull off what. So, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Great, thank you very much.